We'll call the city council meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Gilbertson.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
Sholdas.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing and roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. I'll call on Kyle Fox to go over the consent items.
Meeting mayor, for the council's consideration on the consent agenda tonight are the city council minutes of April 21st, 2025, city council CIP tour meeting minutes of April 17th, planning commission minutes of April 2nd, planning commission minutes of April 23rd, 2025 as a draft, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Draft Minutes, April 28th, Christiansen CPAs and Consultants preliminary and final plat, local government resolution, business development, infrastructure application, Atlas of West Central MN lawful gambling application, accounts payable report for 4/1725 through 4/3025.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion. Hearing and roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Next item is the open forum, and we have Albert Reyes wants to speak to us. Give us your name, address, and remember you have three minutes.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor Doug, and council members. Martin, excuse me, good evening Gilbertson. What I, what I actually come forward today is with an awareness more than anything, but it's also in a form of a question. I don't know all the politics of our, the politics of all this, but I do know that I can voice my concern, so. But before I can voice my concern, I need to first set the foundation for that. In biblical times, and I, and I, and I, and I want to believe that I have the right to speak this. In biblical times, the Lord, our Father, our Heavenly Father, for those that choose to be followers of the Lord Jesus Christ, is that he gives us these forewarnings, he gives us things that we can foresee, that we can see coming. But for those that are entwined with the Spirit of the Lord are able to see those things. For those that are digging into the Word of the Lord can be able to foresee these things. And I want to believe that those, one of those persons, and many of them in this council that I've been finding out that they're believers, the awareness that I want to bring is the, the fact that the terrorists are gonna take, they're gonna take effect on all of us, no matter what. From the smallest portion of a cardboard box that gets used for shipping, to shampoo containers for your panties, for your Maybelline products, I do not know, but everything, the majority of the stuff that we get is produced from across the country. So my, my question and my concern in bringing the awareness is, are we doing anything to be proactive to stock up our end of our, our, if we're a community, then just act like a community, right? So I'm bringing the awareness by saying, what are we doing to take preventive measures? So we're not caught off guard if the time does come about like the Lord says it will come. And that's the awareness I just want to bring to everybody here, including the council, since you are the elected officials to take charge over these matters. So that's what I leave you with today. Thank you, councilman, thank you, Mayor Doug. And thank you for the invite to the prayer meeting. I know Gilbertson was there, and I saw Gardner there. If I missed some of your faces, I apologize, but it was a beautiful gathering, and I just pray that, that those things keep building. Chief Holmes was there, along with his, his units, his, his personnel, and I pressed, I was just speaking to him, and I, I pray that you, you get the position. I see that you're earnestly still sticking around with us, and I just pray that, that you'd be the candidate to select it. And I pray that the anointing of the Lord come upon you, so you, so you can be that director, you can be that chief that is watching over our homes or over our, our dwellings at night. And we appreciate everything that you do, Chief Holmes, and your, and your, and the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Albert. We go to our regular business, and that's the police chief selection, and I'll call on our city administrator, Leslie Valiant. And Leslie, I want to say our condolences to you and your family and the loss of your brother-in-law.
Good evening, council. So tonight it's finally come that we can select a police chief, and my recommendation tonight is interim police chief Michael Home for the position of the Wilmer Police Department. Since the beginning of his career with the Wilmer Police Department in May 8th of 2027, Chief Home has demonstrated unwavering dedication to the citizens of Wilmer. Over the past 18 years, he has served in various capacities, including patrol officer, gang unit, detective, patrol sergeant, and now as interim police chief. His leadership and integrity and commitment to law enforcement have been evident at every stage of his career. Chief Home's extensive experience, proven leadership make him an outstanding candidate for this role, ensuring the continuity, continued safety and well-being of our community. At this time, I'd ask that the council accept my recommendation for Officer Chief, for interim Chief Home to be our current and our longstanding police chief.
We would need a motion to approve the recommendation.
I'll make the.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second discussion. Carl?
I, I support interim Chief Home in this position. I would also like to thank all three finalists for putting themselves out there and going through this. I think we had, it was a tough choice. It was one, and Captain Anderson, I hope you know the respect that you have out there. I, I heard more from people on this issue than anything else that, since I've been on council. And Captain Anderson, you have a lot of respect out there from people, and I sure appreciate your, your service and hope that you are able to continue serving for a long time to come. Also hope that Detective Shafewell is able to find a spot on the department as well for the future. And new Chief Home, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the, the privilege of sitting in on all the interviews, as you know, Leslie. It was, it was an honor to do so because of so many strong candidates. And so many of them were from within our own department, and so I felt like I had this great window in toward an excellent police department that we do have in this community. It's, it's a true blessing to us. And I'll join Councilmember Sholdas in supporting interim Chief Home. I think he's gonna make an excellent chief. Thank you for your, your service to the community in the past, accepting this interim role, and look forward to it becoming a full-time thing for you.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Councilmember Gilbertson. Aye. Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Congratulations, Chief Home.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to mention, because of my involvement in this, this process, I heard from a lot of people in our community about what a long process it was, including some of my colleagues, I think, at the table as well. Like, we were surprised at, at how long it took to arrive at the moment we are right now this evening. And I, I can't help but believe, from my perspective, that that was because we did not have a consulting firm helping us to make this selection. I think our staff did an excellent job working, working, and doing the work that a consulting firm would have done for us. In addition to the stuff that we already asked them to do, the police commission was fantastic in the work that they did. I think everything went smoothly, and still there were just these normal things that came up that a consulting firm would have been so helpful with. Almost all the candidates were interior, interior, would have been interior hires, they came from within the department. There were still complications that slowed us down. I think it probably cost us two to three months. And so I would certainly like to have the staff bring the council a proposal that we could consider that would state a new city policy that anytime a department director resigned, that the staff would immediately put out bids, requests for bids, requests for proposals from consulting firms that would then come to this council, and we could decide whether or not we wanted to accept those bids or do it on our own or seek out further bids, but at least they wouldn't have to wait, you know, multiple weeks to get those bids out and then bring them back to us. So I don't know if, if staff, if that's something you can do, if you need a motion from us this evening, an official act, but I would certainly love for us to consider that.
Yes, we certainly will come up with something, and then at that point in time, council could vote on that process and procedure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Move on to Jay, the project number 2503D, Business Highway 71 bid award, and a call on city engineer Jared Bogey. Hi, Jared.
Good evening, mayor and council. As the mayor indicated, this item in your packet is related to the Business 71 project bids that were received. We opened bids on April 23rd. We received three bids, competitive bids. And the low bid was submitted by OMG Midwest, Doing Business as Minnesota Paving and Materials out of Rogers, Minnesota. And the low bid amount is with, I should indicate, there's also an alternate that was included in the, in the project, and that's the construction or a connection for a trail along Business 71. And the recommendation this evening is to award the base bid plus alternate A to OMG Midwest in the amount of $2,180, $2,180.35. So with that, mayor council, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. That's the first action. And then the second one is to approve the as-bid budget if you so choose.
Right, we need a motion to approve.
I can make a motion to adopt the resolution awarding the base bid and alternate A of project number 2503D, Business Highway 71 mill and overlay to OMG Midwest Incorporated, Doing Business as Minnesota Paving and Materials of Rochester, of Rogers, Minnesota.
Second. You got a motion and a second discussion. Carl?
So, Mr. Bogey, the, the gap is at, I'm assuming from the old, or from the daycare at the top of the hill over to the tech campus?
So the gap actually is from the, where the trail intersects the daycare driveway. The trail essentially ends at the driveway. People utilize that driveway to walk out to Business 71 and then access those signals there. So what this would do is it would separate that trail from the driveway. It would be its own continuous trail segment over to the signals.
All right.
Yep.
Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Odens, my ongoing question about the tax impact that this will have for us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Counselor. I'd be right around $105,000 a year.
Okay, thank you.
Let me.
Audrey?
Just a question on the trail. Is it going to go behind the building to go around? I know that had been a consideration before, or is it going, it's pretty steep over there.
Yeah, so the trail will be located on the southwest side of that existing driveway. It is relatively steep, so there is some fill that'll need to be brought in to make that grade ADA compliant, but it'll be just southwest of that existing driveway, so.
Okay.
Towards the.
You're cutting into the skiing hill. It's just a joke. I appreciate that the trail is gonna be finished, so thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. We need a motion to accept as-bid budget for project 2503D.
Some of it.
Second. We got a motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Thank you, Jared.
Thanks, council.
Next item is our annual stormwater presentation from environmental specialist Sarah Seets. Hi, Sarah.
Hi. I'll pull it up, give me one second. All right, so, good evening, mayor and council members. It is time again for a brief overview of the city's stormwater program. So I'll go through a quick review of what we're referring to when we use terms like stormwater or MS4. I'll share a bit about what staff have been working on over the past year, and then, of course, scattered throughout is gonna be some of the why that we do all of these things. So feel free to jump in, ask questions at any time. I don't mind interruptions. Let's start with what stormwater is, right? So it's the rain and snow melt that runs off hard surfaces, often called impervious surfaces. Stormwater that's not absorbed into the ground will pick up pollutants such as dirt and loose sediment, gas and oil, litter, other debris as it flows over these hard surfaces, and then into storm drains and into Hot Creek, Wilmer and Foot Lakes, or the county ditch that flows to Lake Wakanda. And it carries all of those pollutants with it as it goes. Managing stormwater appropriately is vital to the health of our waterways, our community, and our quality of life. Foot and Wilmer Lakes are important to our community, and Hot Creek and Grass Lake and Wakanda and the South Fork Crow River are important to our greater area, and all are directly impacted with our city's stormwater management. So Wilmer has what's called an MS4, or a municipal separate storm sewer system. This is a publicly owned system that collects and transports only stormwater via pipes and channels. MS4s do not send stormwater runoff to a wastewater treatment plant. Stormwater collected in the MS4 is discharged directly into streams, lakes, rivers, or ponds. We have coverage under an MS4 permit that allows us to discharge stormwater into our water bodies, and our MS4 permit requires that we comply with a variety of measures that contribute to reducing polluted runoff and improving our stormwater management. So, as I already noted, stormwater is not just water. It's full of varying amounts of pollutants. And our stormwater concerns are salt or chloride from de-icing efforts, sediment, yard waste, lawn chemicals, oil or other leaked vehicle fluids, litter, pet waste, and bacteria and other pathogens. And you can see here how some of those pollutants make their way into stormwater runoff. Now, it's the city's responsibility to prevent stormwater from harming Minnesota's valuable resources, both surface waters and groundwaters. Managing our stormwater will improve the quality of our rivers, lakes, and streams. It also helps us meet the requirements of our MS4 permit and avoid fines. Adequately managing our stormwater provides direct benefits, filtering pollutants, reducing flooding, improving aesthetics, and increasing the flow of water into the ground that recharges water supplies. Wilmer's Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program covers the six areas of stormwater management listed here, and I'll summarize each of them. First off is public education and outreach. Our public education program focuses on these six topics. The campaign distributes information via social media, the city website, city events, and community events. Public education and outreach is valuable because these are the ways we influence behaviors. And when we can inform kids or residents about good stormwater habits, they collectively impact stormwater quality. Next is public participation and involvement. This is an important component of our stormwater program. In order to interact with the public and provide opportunities for them to ask questions and give feedback, our staff attend several in-person events every year. So the Healthy Earth, Healthy Kids event was just held a couple of Saturdays ago, and the Public Works Open House is going to be on May 22nd this year. Both of these events and the others allow us the opportunity to have two-way dialogue with both kids and adults instead of us just distributing educational messages out to them. The third area covered by the city's stormwater program is illicit discharge detection and elimination. So an illicit discharge is considered any discharge to an MS4 that is not composed entirely of stormwater. Common illicit discharges include spills or from accident scenes or vehicle leaks, dumping of auto and household chemicals into storm drains, construction site sediment in streets, chlorinated pool water, improper disposal of yard and pet waste, commercial car washes, and septic tank discharge. They can also be direct connections, such as wastewater piping connected to storm drains, or indirect connections like infiltrations from cracked sanitary systems. In order to minimize illicit discharges, the city has adopted several appropriate ordinances. We provide training each year to all staff who work out in the field, and we consistently distribute information to the public through physical informational handouts and through our online educational campaign. The city's always taken an educational stance over an enforcement stance when it comes to any illicit discharges, and that seems to still be the appropriate avenue for encouraging compliance with this. A big part of the stormwater program is stormwater runoff control on active construction sites. So commercial, industrial, and linear or road projects must have a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is reviewed by the city engineer. And these plans include the details of the physical controls that we all notice when we drive by these. So silt fence, storm drain inlet protection, rock construction entrances, those things. Whether in place on commercial or residential or road projects, these best management practices are utilized to prevent waste and sediment and the sediment-laden stormwater from leaving those construction sites. Part of the city's stormwater program also is managing stormwater after the construction is complete. So any project that involves either new or reconstructed impervious surfaces of one acre or more requires permanent stormwater best management practices or BMPs. So many of these are stormwater ponds. Unfortunately, our city is not located in an area where soils and groundwater are conducive to a lot of stormwater infiltration. The city is required by permit to keep a mapped inventory of these permanent post-construction BMPs, both those on private property and the ones on city-owned property. And the final area covered by our stormwater program is pollution prevention and good housekeeping. So on the sediment and nutrient reduction front, our major activity is street sweeping. It's not complicated, and it keeps tons of sediment and hundreds of pounds of phosphorus out of our local water bodies. The Public Works Department has two street sweepers. They're operated from spring through fall with an emphasis right after snow is off the streets, and then again as the leaves are falling in the fall. Collecting all of that sediment and the leaves and grass clippings not only protects water quality, but it also protects our stormwater conveyance system also. Another pollutant that continues to drive municipal operations is chloride. So we've all heard by now that once chloride is in surface waters or groundwater, it's quite cost prohibitive to remove. So we focus on preventing it from getting to those water resources. Several years ago, the city began transitioning some of our plow trucks from granular salt application to brine application, and it's really like a triple win. So brine is more effective at treating ice and thick snow because it begins to work immediately, and it stays in place better than rock salt. When applying salts in brine form, we apply less salt overall than we would need to apply if we were using rock salt, which saves money, and leftover rock salt also causes damage to metal and concrete. So less salt in the environment, less damage to infrastructure, less money spent, on top of it being more effective than granular salt. Last year, many of you will remember, I talked about the heavy lift that our current public works staff were doing to help us shore up the mapped inventory requirement of our permit. We had a lot of inventory that needed to be surveyed out in the field, labeled on a map, and inspected also. So the city's stormwater inventory map must include not only the collection system, but the hundreds of outfalls and the dozens of stormwater ponds and the structural BMPs. So think storm, sump, catch basins and those grit separation structures. Those would be the structural BMPs. Additionally, the snow storage locations, the city-owned facilities that might contribute pollutants to the stormwater, so the dog park, the fueling station at Public Works, and the sand and the salt storage locations. All of those have to be mapped, and that map needs to be continually updated. So that is what they've been working on hours and hours for the last two years. City staff have also been conducting hundreds of inspections on the components of the MS4 system. So stockpiles are inspected quarterly, the structural BMPs are inspected annually, and then all of the outfalls and all of the city-owned ponds have to be inspected once during the permit cycle. The current five-year permit expires in November, and I'm happy to say we're on track to have all of the outfall and pond inspections completed before that date. Maintenance and repairs and replacement will be scheduled based on the inspection final, or findings. And that's our final piece of our stormwater program. But I can't leave, of course, without telling everybody about the rain barrel cost share program. So we have rain barrels. We have them in stock right now. Last week's rains seem to have sparked the interest again. We've been fielding phone calls and emails. So these rain barrels, as pictured here, are available to city residents. They're $68 each. There's a limit of four per household. They can contact me. That email shows up better, I promise, on the website. And they can be picked up either. And they can be picked up either out at the wastewater treatment plant, which a lot of them do when they're just going out to the brush site anyways, or they can be picked up at the old wastewater treatment plant, the maintenance shop, which is located next to the Wilmer Bus Garage, kind of across from Cashwise there. So, does anyone have questions or feedback? Absolutely.
I just picked one up a few days ago. Very easy to hook up. I was done with it within three, four minutes, getting it all hooked up very easily. So, very excited to get it all placed outside my house.
It's a good example.
Hi. Do we have any metrics on all these efforts? Are they making a difference in the end result? Is the quality of water getting better?
Right. I like that question. So the quick answer that I'll give you is yes. The complicated answer is yes, and. Wilmer sits on two different watersheds, right? So some of our stormwater goes to Hot Creek, to the Minnesota River. Some of our stormwater goes down the county ditch to Lake Wakanda, to the South Fork Crow. All of it eventually ends up down in the Gulf. Both of those watersheds are, have been, part of what the state, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, now calls One Watershed, One Plan efforts. So as part of those studies, all of the, especially municipalities, but all of the land and all of the water bodies have an assessment done, and they figure out the pollutant load that different water bodies can assess or accept and still meet the water quality standards that the state has set. So while we don't directly sample and measure the pollutants in our stormwater, we can see that we collectively, with the other municipalities and landowners in these watersheds, are making a difference because the state reassesses those water bodies on a 10-year schedule. So hopefully, that's enough and not more than you were hoping for.
It's a fair answer.
Thank you.
Sarah, go ahead, Audrey.
I'm just curious about our lakes. You can drive by after rain and see water running into our lakes. And in particular, the railroad, and there's a few other places where you can actually see a change in the color of the water that's running in there. I'm just curious if that's part of what you're still working on, or what responsibility do different places have as far as what runs into the lakes?
Yeah, that's a great question, too. So specifically with the railroad, they do have an industrial stormwater permit. So the stormwater in, from part of the railroad, obviously, not their entire track length, but from the rail yard, I guess, would be a more appropriate way to say it, is discharged to a stormwater pond that they have to maintain, and that pond then overflows to the lake. So specifically, again, to the railroad, they are doing some stormwater treatment, which they are required to do. There are other industries in Wilmer also that are large enough that they also have industrial stormwater permits. Those permits require them to do more treatment, or pre-treatment maybe, before that water flows into a surface water. As far as, in general, our churches, or schools, or other businesses, or houses, our responsibility is to educate and encourage and inform all of them on what they can do to improve the stormwater runoff from their own properties. There are, there's a variety of ways we can do that, right? So the education is a huge one. Rain barrels, I've said it before, they're sort of a gateway BMP, right? You get a rain barrel, then maybe you think about a rain garden, or if you're putting in a new driveway, maybe you go crazy and put it in permeable pavers instead. Lots of things, easy to direct your stormwater to your grass instead of just down your driveway into the street. There are a lot of cost share programs that, like watershed districts and the soil and water conservation districts have, that can assist landowners, whether they're businesses or households, in implementing some of those more aggressive stormwater BMPs to capture and treat more stormwater. But as far as being regulated by the state, the city as a whole is. And then again, construction projects, reconstructed our new impervious surface, and then certain industries, depending on their size.
Sarah, there's, I got some history on stormwater. There was a time when there was testing of water in the ditch next to Cashwise. And there was a lot of fees. I don't know if we've ever resolved that problem.
Yes. So there was, for many years, after the wastewater treatment plant moved, there was, out to where it is now, so 15 years ago, they still tested the water in County Ditch 23A. There were some concerned residents downstream who thought the stormwater and wastewater from Wilmer was definitely contributing more significant of a pollutant load than they thought it should, the city should be. What the testing showed, and I'll say this with caveats, is in summary, is that, yes, there are high fecal coliform numbers in the stormwater runoff coming from the city of Wilmer. It was high when the wastewater treatment plant was there. It was high when the wastewater treatment plant is not there. In the research I've done, and the testing that we've done at the beach at Robins Island, and this was, I was gonna say several, but it's probably been closer to like 12 years ago, one of the summer staff at the wastewater treatment plant actually tested several public swimming beaches in Candy High County to compare those fecal coliform levels. It's common. High fecal coliform is common. High E. coli is common in stormwater runoff. And it's typically from pet waste and from wildlife. So the city has not done specific testing because you can get really specific and have the lab determine if it's coming from human waste, or if it's coming from wildlife. The city hasn't done that. But our numbers are in line with other communities who have done that testing, and it's in line with other communities that sample and test their public beaches also. If we can get people to pick up after their dogs, that's absolutely going to be part of it.
Then we gotta get the wildlife, too.
Yeah, it's harder to get them to be trained.
Another thought I had was phosphorus, removal of phosphorus.
Yep.
And cattails do a lot of that, from my understanding. And on Grass Lake, we've got a lot of cattails. But I served on the Hawk Creek Board, and there's, I don't think there's as much stormwater retention, stormwater detention, and cattails on that pool. Is there?
So if I'm very honest, I can't speak specifically to that because I don't know those water bodies very well. And I am confident in saying a lot of Hot Creek, like a lot of creeks and smaller rivers in Minnesota have been ditched. Then we lose the natural vegetation that was in them, too, when they were natural meandering streams.
Well, that just comes as a concern on my part after being on the Hawk Creek Board, and there was a lot of that that happened. But then they instituted the, how many feet?
The buffer law?
The buffer law.
Yeah, so it's one rod. I believe it's one rod, 16 and 1/2 feet of buffers.
16 and 1/2, yeah, that sounds right.
On both sides, on public water courses.
In other communities, they often see the labeling of drains that says this flows directly to a lake that you might be swimming in. Do we have anything like that here in Wilmer?
Um, not. Since I've been with the city, I'm not sure if it was done previous, and maybe they have been replaced, but that is very common in communities. New London and Spicer, Belgrade Atwater did them before. St. Cloud does that a lot. They do murals, actually, storm drain murals that cover the sidewalk. So it can be used as a very quick, you know, just a stencil that says drains to lake, or drains to river, whatever. It can be used, again, I've seen in those mural settings where it's a bigger educational message, too, about how our streets and our lawns and everything are connected to all the stormwater and the water quality.
The map that you showed earlier, is that, do we have them mapped out where the drains are that would flow into there, or do we know how many?
We, yes. They are, there are thousands. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but thousands of storm drains in the city. And our maps are getting much better as we're doing reconstruction projects because those are all digital to begin with, and we didn't have to scan in paper maps and put them on a digital map.
Be nice to see some labeling like that. Even just a quick little spray paint stencil on each drain so that people know that.
Absolutely.
Of that grass and everything else.
We can definitely pursue that.
Audrey.
I know this is an education piece, but there's many times you can drive down First Street, or lots of other streets where people are mowing into the street. And I think we reached out to commercial lawn mowers, people, lawn mowing services, anyway, to do that. Is that something we do every year? I know on our street, where we are, we've got multiple people who, that's just what they do every time they mow.
Sure. Yeah, so the city did adopt an ordinance several years ago also that specifically calls out grass clippings and leaves in the streets as being prohibited. We do not do a direct mailing to the, like, commercial lawn care companies every year. We did that as part of a group that, a larger central Minnesota group that we were a part of. We can look into doing that again, absolutely. I will say what we do have, all of our Public Works staff, all of our wastewater staff, anybody who's sort of out in the community, like outside of their office buildings, they have door hangers, a couple different types of them. But one of them specifically is about grass clippings in the street. So they can either stop and have a quick conversation with the, whether it's a commercial person, or, you know, the neighborhood kid who's doing a bunch on the street, or just the homeowner themselves. If they're comfortable having that conversation, and again, education, letting them know. Or, because we realize that that's not all of our staff's regular day job, we provided them with those door knockers that they can just leave, you know, under the windshield wiper, or hanging on the door of the house, too, to provide that education. It is a public education message that we try to hit hard on all of our social media, on all of the events we go to also.
Yeah, thank you. I was just thinking, I've often been shamed into the correct actions by my children giving me a hard time about this. And I was wondering just if you hit, like, every elementary school in town and explain to them the reasons why mom and dad, and then when they grow up, should never be putting grass into the street. I wonder how many would go home and correct their parents.
I do like that idea. I'll hit half of them, you hit the other half.
All right.
We'll have them done before the end of May.
It has to be, right? Because they won't be in school in, well, a couple days into June.
Fun social, social media video could help, too, on that one.
So you're on that? You and Evan can be out there.
Anybody else? I got one question, Jan, and that's rain gardens. They were popular for a while, but I don't see many anymore.
They were popular for a while. I will say they are more popular in some communities than others, right? So it depends on the type of streets you have, the street width, the boulevard width, you know how far back the houses are, if people are willing to give up some of their lawn space for them. It also depends on, a lot of it, what I've noticed, is cost share dependent. So if there's, again, a watershed district, a county, an SWCD, something that has grant funds that can help cost share that, that is often also the communities that seem to have more widespread adoption of them. They are completely effective stormwater treatment, especially for smaller scale, like household, right? So if you can direct everything from your driveway or from your garage roof into a rain garden that's both aesthetically pleasing, it's got lots of flowers, and prevents that water from running just down your driveway into the street, it's great. On a large scale, you know, we're not probably the community that's going to be putting in a ton of rain gardens on our street reconstruction projects because our soils and our water table is not incredibly conducive to doing that without more additional components that probably drive up the cost, right? So the emergency drains, the, you know, soil that needs to be excavated and the proper soil for drainage to be brought in, things like that. I've tried. I have most definitely been on that campaign for several years. We'll see.
In our backyard, we have gardens. And I've got my yard graded so that the water goes back to those gardens, and they go down.
That's perfect.
They don't go out.
You should give us some pictures of those. We can use that as an example.
Yeah, I've got pictures in my phone.
All right. We'll connect. And thank you, Butterfield, for getting a rain barrel also. That's perfect.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sarah.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Next is an introduction to Civic Access and My Wilmer app. And a call on our Planning and Development Director, Christopher Corbin.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm very excited to talk to you about two of our new technologies, Civic Access, as well as the My Wilmer app. If you have not downloaded the My Wilmer app, you might want to do that now, right? I see a few. So we are going to talk about these two. I remember a conversation we had at council, probably November of last year. You know that this is part of the technology that we implemented using ARPA funds. You can download the My Wilmer app on the Apple Store or Google Play. This is really a way to streamline the way that we operate and the way that we are civically engaging with residents and tourists, or visitors to Wilmer. You're going to see a few things on the app. There's a way to explore all of our parks and trails, attend city-sponsored events, participate in programs and initiatives we have going on, report an issue, or let us know what's going on in the neighborhoods, if there's a traffic light out, if there's overgrown grass. This is one way to report that. And then you can also, through the app, visit the city of Wilmer website and stay up to date on any of your concerns or complaints. I want to just take a look at the home screen for just a second. Later today, we'll hear about the Connect Wilmer initiative. But Public Works is doing a collaboration with a tree trust. And you can go straight from the city of Wilmer app to purchase a tree to be planted. And then let us know it's going to be an impactful thing. You know, now we get concerns about traffic outage or street signs that are down. It can be overgrown grass, like I stated. But even after a storm and there's branches and trees that have fallen, this is one way to report any non-emergency issues in the neighborhoods. The other one I want to talk about is a way that we have streamlined our permitting process. So all of our processes, you can now, applicant can now apply for over 50 permits for land use, as well as building permits. You do have to create an account. There's a fee estimator on there as well on the website. You can even request, an applicant can even request an inspection, the date, and either they want it in the AM or the PM. They can also track the progress of their permit. And so, right now, applicants can, through Civic Access, applicants can apply online. They'll immediately get a real-time message that we've received their application. They'll receive another notification when their permit application has been reviewed by our building inspectors. And then when their permit is ready to pay, they can actually pay online as well, which was something that we were missing before. So I'm happy to kind of roll this out, and they do receive real-time updates. I'll stop there. If there are any questions, I would like to play a video after.
Questions for Christopher.
Steve?
I don't have a question. I do have a comment. This is great. I actually got a text yesterday from somebody who lives in Ward 2, wanting to know what the status of their construction project was. And wouldn't you know, right here on the app, it says something called "City Projects." I was able to click on that particular project and point that person in the right direction.
There you go.
Thank you for doing this, this is fantastic.
You're very welcome.
It's a good communication piece.
It's great. It's, it's a lot of fun and, um, you know, staff have, I and staff have been working on it for over a year now. So, um, along with Public Works for asset management too. Uh, so we're really happy to have this out into the open, to the public.
Tom?
I, I'm really encouraged to see the, the tree sale information. Just, uh, the other day, our West Central Tribune had, uh, had an editorial in there, talking about all the trees that we've lost in our community. And between Emerald Ashbor and, and the others. And so, you know, this gives all of, rather than relying on the city to do stuff for everybody, maybe now everybody can help build up the city, uh, with, with that. So that's, that's pretty neat to see. They were just requesting that, uh, in the editorial, so, thanks.
Audrey.
I haven't, thank you, Mary Reese. I haven't played with this enough to know, but if I take a complaint from someone that I, you know, would usually have called into the city, do I put this complaint in here or should that, well, how will I know that, that complaint was resolved? I guess is the question.
Great question. So councilperson Nelson, you would definitely want to submit the complaint through the app or through civic access, cause you can do it there as well. What you're going to get is when we've investigated and we've went out and serviced, we'll send you an email that says this ticket was actually closed out. So you can report that in real time as well.
Okay. All right. I was able to do it on my phone, but I, I'm going to have to get permission from our IT department to do it on my computer.
We'll have it pushed out.
Okay, thank you.
We'll have it pushed out.
Anybody else? Justin?
Just wondering if you considered like contact information on this too? Or if there'd be an opportunity to like, contact your city councilperson? Or, you know, contact a department, uh, head or a staff member, you know, information that's, that's clearly available on the website, but if it was in the app, that could, um, kind of expedite things for folks.
We can certainly take a look at this, uh, at that. The app is totally customizable, and so there are some things that we can do. We can look into that.
Anybody else? Audrey.
Just wants more. I just want to say thank you, we've been waiting for this for a long time. And I, I think it is a good opportunity for our citizens to be able to, to put things in without, um, having to make a phone call or reporting, feeling like they're reporting their neighbor.
Yep, I agree.
And honestly, for us senior citizens, it's easy to use it.
It is, it's very user-friendly.
It's not complicated.
No. And you can even take pictures of, if you see a pothole or something, and Public Works will get back to you and tell you when it's done, so. Right, Justin?
That's right.
All right.
All right, I have a quick video and I'll play that, play this for you.
Welcome to the City of Wilmer's Civic Access Portal. To log in or register, click in the top right corner on login or register. Or you can click the login or register card in the center of the page. If you need to create an account, click create an account.
It's the internet.
Okay. Well, let's see.
Enter your email, your first name, your last name, and your mobile number. Next, you will create a password. And in the password, you must have at least eight characters, at least one lowercase letter, at least one uppercase letter, a number, and no parts of your username may be used in the password. Next, a code will be sent to your email to verify. Navigate to your email, copy the code, and then paste the code in the enter code box. Click verify, and then scroll down to click continue. Next, you will enter your per-
Perp-
Personal information, first name, last name, the contact preference that you would like, whether it be text or email. You will also add additional information such as your business phone number, home phone number, and mobile phone number. Your business and home number can be the same as your mobile phone number. Click next, and then enter your address, city, state, and zip. Once you've finished that, click submit. And congratulations, you have successfully registered for the City of Wilmer's Civic Access Portal.
Big thanks to Dave Hillebrand who created this video. Uh, what we're looking at right now is the dashboard. So once you have an account, no matter what permits you have out there or completed, they will be here, so you'll see all of your plans, um, your inspections that are coming up as well. It's, it's really changing the way that we do our work, um, in planning and development, so.
All right, well, go ahead, Vicki.
Will that video be on the website for people?
It'll be on there tomorrow and throughout our social media. And throughout the summer, we'll be, um, doing different social media posts and communications for both My Wilmer app and my, um, and civic access.
All right.
You're welcome.
Justin?
Yeah, um, is there ways, I'm assuming that you can track how many people have signed out for both of these?
Yes.
Can you keep us posted on that, even if it's just a simple email, like monthly throughout the summer?
Absolutely. I'll put in my director's report.
All right.
Thank you. You got it.
Welcome to the City of Wilmer's Civic Access. Welcome to the City of Wil-
You're out of order. All right. Well, thank you, Christopher. All right, um, call on Kyle Box for a update on the Connect Wilmer initiative.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I get to play city clerk this evening as Verna is at a Clerks Institute conference this week. So bear with me as I get readjusted. Uh, so tonight before you, I just wanted to give the council a, a couple of brief updates on the Connect Wilmer market, uh, Connect Wilmer Initiative marketplace and overall project status of where we're at to date. Uh, the last time I was in front of the council was towards the end of February and hadn't, have not had an opportunity to come back or haven't, um, had a, an update to give to the council since then. But, uh, late Friday afternoon, um, the city put out its, uh, Connect Wilmer Initiative marketplace to start, um, collecting pre-sales and driving interest and, uh, throughout the, throughout the City of Wilmer. Uh, this marketplace isn't just, isn't not, uh, physically located to phase one of the project. We made the decision, and I think rightfully so, to open up for anyone within city limits to apply and register and sign up for a service. As of end of day Friday, we had three signups, uh, in a couple of hours that it was active and before the end of the day hit. Uh, and then at about five o'clock, five thirty this afternoon, uh, we just peaked over sixty-five signups, um, since, uh, late Friday afternoon. So as we continue to, um, look into this, um, and push out material, I want to keep the council updated on what those numbers look like. And we'll get a more deeper dive into actual, the physical boundaries of, of, of the phase one construction project, which is what will be in front of the council, uh, later this, uh, later this year, uh, to really determine whether or not you would, the council is going to move forward with the phase one of that project. One of the things too that we've talked about, uh, internally is looking at, of course, we've did the civil engineering and the network architecture for phase one. And just a brief reminder, uh, if you think of First Street, Highway twelve, Nineteenth Avenue, all the way to the industrial park is more or less the boundary of, of phase one. But as we look through the pre-sales and the signups, and, um, if, when we can look at this map citywide, if there are opportunities or hotspots or certain neighborhoods that may be outside, just outside of that phase one boundary, gives us an opportunity to reevaluate and, and look at maybe a specific block or a hotspot, outside of that phase one boundary, and gives us the opportunity to, to go and to capture those and provide service to those residents that signed up. So I just put that, put that in front of the council now, um, to, um, I guess we'll be looking for input and, and if it, uh, we'll, staff would provide a recommendation and seek guidance from the council, if that's something that the council would like to do in the future. If the council approves phase one of that project, how would you like to proceed? Maybe collecting some of those hotspots or high-traffic areas just outside of that physical boundary. Um, so we're very excited. We've, uh, again partnered with, uh, the Silverlight, Silverlight Fiber Network. Uh, they are acting as an aggregate ISP for the City of Wilmer. So under their umbrella, if you have visited the Connect Wilmer Initiative marketplace, they are, it's using their platform, their software, um, to run the, to run that information, run that marketplace for us. But they act as an aggregate ISP. And what that means is that they have contracts and agreements with, uh, three out of the four ISPs on the marketplace currently. And Telepop, Altitude Fiber, and Direct Communications are all aggregated ISPs under, um, Silverlight Fiber Network. Uh, the fourth ISP listed on that is Broadband MN, uh, regionally based out of Hutchinson. So there are four active ISPs operating on that network. Uh, we feel that's a comfortable number. It is a, um, it's a larger number that we had initially had anticipated. We were going to be extremely happy with one and ecstatic with two, especially when you're trying to propose an open access fiber network. And, uh, getting more than one ISP was very important for us. But lo and behold, uh, the week of April twenty-second, I believe, was when we got confirmation that we were getting that fourth ISP direct communication. So at that, uh, February meeting, you would not have seen any of their pricing information or anything like that or made, um, made notice of them, because they just became available to us a few short weeks ago. Uh, so moving on from the marketplace, again, we'll continue to push this information. We did send out a press release to the, to the Tribune, to the radio, to other media outlets as well as social media and the city's, um, city's main fa, uh, website as well. So we'll continue to put out efforts to garner interest and, um, bring that report back to the council throughout the, uh, throughout this initiative phase. Overall project status, where we're at to date. Um, we met last Thursday with our team, uh, from Bolton and Mink and our team from Hometown Fiber. We do a, a bi-weekly meeting with that group just to make sure we're keeping on track with tasks and things that still need to be accomplished. Uh, the goal this week, which I believe will be achievable, is to have complete, uh, the project would be, uh, complete and ready to bring to the council for bid, uh, when we're ready to do so. Uh, so more or less, more or less will be in a shelved state, uh, as of this week. I think it'll be important for us to have a, uh, an opportunity to keep this marketplace open for an extended period of time, three, four weeks maybe, um, to really make sure that we're getting our message out there. We've just had it open for a few short days, um, but can, and allow us some time to continue garner, to, to have people look at and sign up for that service. So as of right now, uh, what we're anticipating is, um, potentially bringing a action item to the council to authorize bids to go out at the council's first meeting in June. If that does, um, if we see an increase in support or an increase in, uh, signups, could be as early as the nineteenth. But I just want to maybe more solidify that June second date or the first meeting in June, which I believe is June second, for a potential action item for the council to go out, to authorize bids to go out. Um, after that, those bids would be out for an extended period of time, um, thirty days plus, thirty days or plus, and allow bids to be opened, and those would come back to the city council, uh, prop in, after the Fourth of July. I think we have a July seventh meeting or the, the second meeting in July. Uh, so that's, that is the timeline that we're anticipating at this point. Obviously, it's still subject to change, but that's the goal that we are aiming for, for a, uh, getting bids or authorization for the project to go out for bid. Mr. Mayor, there, I will pause there if there are any questions. This is an information action, information only, um, item tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Yes?
Silverlight, is that the outlet out of Idaho?
Correct.
And all the ISPs go through that?
Yes, now, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you for the question. So Silverlight is acting, acting as that aggregate ISP or a, they have three ISPs underneath their umbrella that are going to be providing service on Wilmer's network.
Okay.
So Silverlight themselves is not an, not a direct ISP. They, they offer that service in other markets, but, um, they have agreements with other ISPs to offer the service here in Wilmer, underneath their network.
Thank you, I didn't understand that before.
Yep.
Any other questions? Steve?
You know, uh, first, thanks for fixing your verbiage.
Yes.
That's an inside comment probably.
Yes.
If you're one of the sixty-five people that have looked at this. Uh, I do have a question though. On the, this was sold to us as low-income internet. We're going to have all these great options for low income, but when I go to the low-income tab, it says, "We are currently exploring new fiber internet packages that would offer reduced speeds at a low monthly rate to help make fiber more accessible." While these options are not available yet, we will keep you uninfor, informed when they launch. In the meantime, we encourage you to select a residential fiber internet package now so we know you're interested and can prioritize your connection. Can you guarantee me that A, there is going to be a low pricing option with more than one provider? And B, this isn't some pull the rug out from underneath you if I sign up as a low-income provider and all of a sudden, whiz-bang, there is no low-income option?
So the number of providers and the guarantee of the, of the service?
Yes.
That's a great question, and I do, I have answers for both of those. So, um, out of the four ISPs that are currently on the network, we have the interest from Broadband MN would be offering the low-income package. Uh, the other ISPs at this point are not interested in offering a low-income package. Uh, but we do have one provider that would offer that. The guarantee is a, a commitment, I reiterated it again this afternoon or today, uh, to the, to Silverlight and to the ISPs that this is something that we want on our network. Uh, it's been, we've talked about it since day one, uh, that this is going to be something that we want to prioritize. When we, uh, again, look, looking back to last week, we, I had a meeting with the ISP, with Broadband MN. Um, it's a service that they, a model that they have already. It's subsidized with other programs that are out there. So we're looking at, um, bringing that, essentially offering that same program on the, on the network. Um, so that, that is the goal, and I obviously can't guarantee it, but that is the goal and that is what we're going to be striving for. It's been reiterated several times with the ISPs that this is something that we would like, we want, we need on this network.
Can we demand it? Can we make it a part of their agreement?
We absolutely can. And that, and it is written, it would be written in their ISP agreements, which are currently still being drafted. Yes.
Going on to the site, it looks like there's a lot of different options. Sometimes I'm overwhelmed by more options, which I guess are good, because that's what we wanted. But at the same time, as the consumer finally picking out which Cheerio box I want to, want to buy, I, I can become overwhelmed. If I select one of those options, uh, am I stuck with choosing that one? Or can I make a change if I show the interest that I am?
Thank you for the question, Councilwoman Gilson. You can absolutely change, no contracts. Uh, when you sign up today, it doesn't ask for any, any money, it doesn't ask for credit card information. Uh, we're simply asking for name, address, and what service that you're looking for. Uh, you can cancel the service, you can change the service at any time.
I saw that, I think it was Broadband Minnesota, their rates were as low as fifty-five dollars a month for almost a, a gig of up and down.
Correct.
And so I was very surprised and, and it was great to see those as a, a low-cost option so far. I'm really excited to see even lower costs than fifty-five dollars, uh, a month, so.
Yeah, I, yes, looking forward to it.
This is getting into economics, but, okay, so all these rates are published, right? Everybody takes Broadband Minnesota's rate, the other three guys decide, I don't have the market share, and they leave. And we're stuck with one provider. Is that reasonably could happen, right?
Yes.
How is that different than what we have now?
We have had, uh, all of the prices, all of the information that you see on the website has been shared transparently with all of the ISPs. We have talked about actively engaged with the ISPs on, are you comfortable with the market share? Are you comfortable with the performer that we have put in front of the council? It's the same document that we have shared with the ISPs. Uh, that conversation has happened several times, and the answer remains, we are still interested. We still think we have enough market share, we still think we can compete at these prices. When you look at some of the packages on there, I would, I would really encourage to, to, when you click into it and you sign up for a service, some of those services, uh, might say, hey, I want a gig symmetrical at fifty-five bucks a month. Well, do you need managed wifi? Do you need, do you want to pay for your own? Do you need, do you want to pay for your own router, or do you want to rent one? Those types of scenarios where, okay, that's going to be an extra five bucks, that's an extra seven bucks, whereas you look at some of those other providers, might be already all included. So really, your price at the end of the day is going to be very comparable to, from one provider to another, but that's where the city has actively stepped back, other than the low-income requirement that we, that's going to be in here. The prices are the, are driven by the ISPs. They understand the market better than, than we do. Again, we've, we've transparently shared those prices and positions and, and market share outlooks. They, they still remain comfortable.
Any other questions?
Audrey?
Thank you, Mary Reese. Just a clarification. I just went there, and my observation, where I live is outside of Phase One. However, I put my address in, and it says, "Great news, your address can now order service." So you want people outside of that Phase One to go ahead and do this? Whether it's actually, will be included in the Phase One or not? How will that work?
Correct. Yes, it's opened up citywide, so anywhere in city limits can sign up for that service. The thought behind opening up citywide, I think, again, this is all hypothetical or pending Phase One approval, but hypothetically, let's say Phase One goes through, it's successful, now we're looking at Phase Two. When we look at the data as a whole, do we have enough signups in Phase Two to proceed? Do we have enough signups in Phase Three to proceed? Can we do both projects at the same time? Because we have a customer base that's going to support both Phase Two and Phase Three at the same time. All of that information would be collected, reviewed, and brought to the city council. But that is part of the reason why, again, when we look at future years and future bonding years, construction years, is it possible to do Two and Three? Or do we need to maybe even adjust the boundaries of Phase Two and Phase Three, depending on where those heat maps and hot pockets pop up on the marketplace?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Bob?
You mentioned earlier, opening this out to those just outside the city limits. Is that my understanding? Is that what you were referring to? Or are those areas that are just outside of the boundaries of Phase One and Phase Two?
Correct. Outside of the Phase One construction boundaries. Everything, we are building only within city limits.
Thank you.
Yes.
There are no further questions. I'll thank Kyle for his hard work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You've become a real authority on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
All right. Now, we'll go to Leslie, City Administrator, and there's a request for a work session on May 12th.
Yes, I'm going to sit right here. So we would like to have a work session on May 12th, and this will be in regards to our capital improvement plan, to discuss some options, maybe for some work to be done this year, along with asking council where we're going to stand with 2026, as we build our 2026 budget, so.
Good time, too. Good timing.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't need a question on that. It's just, we go ahead and have the May 12th work session, bringing everybody's attention to that. All right? Thank you, Leslie. Any announcements?
Steve?
Yeah, I have one. If you've driven by the Flags of Honor, or if you drove by it last week, you may have noticed some activity out there. We are, the concrete is in place for the next two tablets we're putting in. As the Veterans Central Council, we voted about a year or so ago to authorize, or to put in a tablet commemorating those in Candy Island County specifically, who have died as a result of enemy action. So hopefully, end of this week or barely early next week, we'll be placing two tablets with 127 names on it, and then we'll be at Memorial, everything should be in place by Memorial Day, and I encourage everybody to come out and see it. It's going to be really beautiful when it's done.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Thank you for your part. Anything else?
Mayor? Just one item for the council. Since last time, we discussed the Wilmer Municipal Utility Facility project and keeping an open line of communication. In their recent packet that they sent out, they've got some information on the timeline and what that looks like. I know that was requested by the council, and so you can kind of see what they're, what they're looking for, the rationale, the existing conditions, parking for trucks and things like that. And so I encourage the council, maybe you don't always take a close look at those packets from other, other commissions that you don't sit on, but I encourage you to check that out. It would have been in your last packet from the Wilmer Municipal Utilities.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. Any motion to adjourn? So move. We've got a motion, a second. We're adjourned.